Dana? Yep. Okay. All right, it is 5:06 on Monday, May 11th, and I would like to call to order a regular board meeting of the Wassa Board of Education. All Wassa School District Board of Education meetings will be conducted as a virtual meeting due to an active emergency situation, COVID-19 pandemic, meaning that multiple board members may be participating in the meeting from remote locations through the use of communications technology, and that public access to the meeting may be arranged through the use of technology. Members of the media and public may attend in person by calling 1-415-655-0001, then dial the meeting room access code 809-008-722, or through the use of the virtual WebEx meeting. The address can be found on the district homepage. All public participants' phones, microphones, and chat dialogue boxes will be muted or disabled during the meeting. Members of the public who do not wish to appear in person may email CPAC@wassaschools.org with public comment in the subject line. Those messages received prior to the start of the meeting will be provided to the board president. Members of the public who do not wish to appear in person may view the meeting live by the Wassa Area Access Meeting on the Government and Education Cable Channel 981. Wassa Area Access Media also livestreams the meeting The meeting will also be available on the Wassa Area Access Media YouTube channel a few days after filming. All meeting access information shall also appear in a prominent location on the Wassa School District website. For those individuals with disabilities, including individuals with visual or hearing impairments, as well as individuals who may have limited access to technology, please contact the Deputy Clerk Cassie Peck at 715-261-0505, or CPAC@wassaschools.org. All right, with that, we will move on to Agenda Item 2, and that is roll call. Hello, everyone. Jim Boucher.
I can't see him.
I can see him. I think I see him.
I see him.
Okay.
Yep.
Carlo. Beth Martin. Pat McKee.
Present.
Teresa Miles is here via phone. Jane Roche.
Yes.
Lance Trollop.
Here.
Lee Webster.
Present.
Tricia Zunker.
Present.
Okay, with that, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think I forgot to turn my mic on. Is yours off?
Mine is off.
Okay. Sorry, I think I forgot to turn my mic on there. Okay. And now I will read the mission statement of the Wassa School District. It is the mission of the Wassa School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. At this point, we are at public and student comment. Have any comments been submitted, Clerk Peck?
There have not.
Okay, Cassie is reporting there have not been any public or student comments submitted. Okay, at this point, we are at Agenda Item 6, approving the consent agenda. Part of this includes the donations to the district, so I would like to acknowledge donors of the district. Since the last regular board meeting, that includes Cloverbelt Credit Union, Gary and Marcia Alexander, and Len Werman. With that, I am seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda with great gratitude for donations to the district. And as a reminder, we'll look for a 1 and 2 to assist Cassie in finding a 1st and 2nd on those motions tonight.
Okay, I got Beth for 1. I need a 2.
Looks like we have Beth Martin as a 1st and a 2nd as Lee Webster.
Okay.
All in favor?
I abstain.
Okay. Lance has abstained. Okay, sorry. Okay, so... Okay, so we're all in favor. We have 1 abstention. Why am I... Am I missing something right now?
No, I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay, so we've completed that motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All the noise was distracting my brain. I apologize. Okay, so we're moving on to Agenda Item 7. And we are at the Education and Operations Committee meeting. So in the... At that meeting, we had the Whole Child, Whole Wassa Short Cycle Report on Goal 2, Recurrent Cost Reductions. Bob Tess presented a report there. That's not an action item. At that meeting, we also had a referendum planning update. Again, this is just regarding a potential referendum planning update. This is for information that Dr. Hiltz and his team will bring to the board at a later date. And so that was further information on that, just a potential referendum.
Tricia, sorry. That one, we do have an update for the board.
Oh, okay. And we do have an update from Dr. Hiltz on that agenda item.
On mic? On you, Cassie?
I'm muted. Well, if you're talking, I need to stay muted.
Right. I'm simply...
Yep, I'm good.
All right. Oh, and can you pull up that presentation? Thank you. All right. So, good evening, everyone. Each month, the administrative team or others will bring a short update to the board and the audience on the referendum proposal. Tonight, we are just looking at 3 questions that came up after the initial proposal. Cassie, if you could go to the next slide. There's 3 questions there. So there are questions about what a comprehensive pupil services team is and why that's so important. There are questions about the demographics. If we restructure our school district, what do those new schools look like? And then there's a number of questions about transportation. So I've asked our Pupil Services Director, Angie Lloyd, and our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Tess, to speak to those 2 or those 3 questions. So I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Lloyd to speak to pupil service teams and various student supports.
All right. Good, thank you. Were we going to bring the presentation up on the... On this screen, Dr. Hiltz?
Yes. Sorry about that.
Can you...
I can.
I'm not able to see it.
Okay.
There we go. Perfect. Cassie, can you go one more forward? All right. So currently, you know, at our secondary buildings, we do have close to what you could call a comprehensive pupil services staff because we have multiple counselors at each of the buildings. However, we only have a part-time social worker at each of the middle schools. And then at the high schools, they each only get about a day a week of social work time. Our social workers are also divvied up at our elementary levels, 2 to 3 buildings apiece. So we would like to get 1 social worker in each of our elementary and secondary buildings. Also, we would like each elementary building to have a full-time counselor and school psychologist. So we would have to increase in the area of social work and school psychologists in order to get 1 in each building. We would also like to put a bridge room in each of our elementary buildings. We've brought the bridge rooms to you before. We had that presentation, I think, in March, February or March, from John Muir. And they did a really nice job of laying down why we need those bridge rooms and then, you know, what they've been seeing at their building, at their bridge room. And it's been a lot of positives. So the bridge rooms are for students who are working on skills, social, emotionally, where they may not be able to handle or be in the right place to handle the academics at that point, and they just need kind of a little break. So we would send them to a bridge room where somebody would be in there, a staff member would be in there who's very trained up in all of the different things that we would like our students to receive explicit instruction in. So we would really like that person to be able to teach restorative practices. And then a lot of the leader-in-me stuff that we will be bringing comes with regulations. So a lot of skills that sometimes we're not seeing the kids come in with, we want to explicitly teach that to them. And we understand it's only some students that may need it. That's why we have that separate area or would like that separate area where they could go to learn those skills. We would also like to put confidential rooms in each building. We have a partnership with the Counseling Consortium, Mearthon Counseling Consortium. And because they're community counselors, they have a requirement for what rooms need to look like and what they need to have in them. So that requires confidentiality, and we don't have rooms currently that we can use. I mean, we make it work, but it would be better if we had rooms specifically for that purpose. We certainly want the therapists to be able to come in and use a room at any day or time of the week that they would need to do that. And right now, they often have to share rooms with our social workers and counselors where those social workers and counselors would have to relocate for a time. Cassie, can you go on to the next one? So we do have, I guess what you could say is enough counselors at this point, where we could put at least 1 in each building, in each elementary building. And we could possibly look at needs and see if we could put 2 per building. But at this point, it's just looking at 1 per building and seeing where the needs take us. And again, a social worker at each of the buildings. We brought up Franklin Elementary to all of you a couple of weeks ago, where we would be putting all of our non-traditional programs in that building. We would probably need that staffed a little more heavily with social workers and counselors. We would also like to hire on an SRO. We split that cost right now with the city of Wassa. We're very thankful that they allow us to split that cost. We look at adding 1 more to the non-traditional building. And again, just as a reminder, in the non-traditional building, it would be our alternative high school program, which is currently housed at NTC. It'd be our 2 peer programs. It would be EEA, which is a charter program, and then WAIT, which is our virtual learning program. And then we would also love to have a help aide at each one of our elementary and secondary buildings, full-time or at least close to full-time at those buildings. You can go ahead, Cassie. And then just to talk, fill in a little bit about the student support systems. I talked to you multiple times about leader-in-me will be starting that this coming school year. That's going to be our universal social-emotional learning curriculum. So right now, you know, we have about... Well, depending on the building, we have 7 to 20 teachers at our elementary buildings, and then other staff members, of course, PIRAs, on core staff. But it's a little bit difficult to find internal coaches for all of the programs that we do. If we have more staff within a building, we would have a more voluptuous program with more internal coaches, which would be very helpful, especially when we're starting up new programs. Restorative practices, we currently have, I would say, about half of our staff trained in that. We would like to get full staff trained in that. It's a 2-day training. So it's really hard to get 2 days of PD when we have so much other professional development to do in the district as well. But if we do end up merging our buildings, the staff can learn from one another. So the staff who've already been trained in restorative practices can help pick up those staff members and lead them in that direction. We also do the trauma-informed care, so we keep that going. I talked about the confidential spaces for our community counseling partners. And then I put social services on here, but really, it could work for any of our community partners where they can build their caseloads based on building. Right now, with 14 elementary schools, they have to get around to all those buildings to see our students too. And that can be incredibly time-consuming with travel included. So it would give them an opportunity. And like our North Central Healthcare Community Partners, it could give them the opportunity to build their caseloads by building, so they could be more efficient as well.
Okay, you're going to have to turn your speaker off.
And that's all I have for pupil services. Any... For pupil services?
She asking about questions?
Yeah, she has some questions.
I'm going to have to stop sharing to be able to see.
Okay.
You might want to repeat. Are there any questions? From board members?
Are there any questions from the board?
Jane, go sign.
Thank you, Jane.
All right, well done, Jane. I like your sign. Can everybody hear me? Thumbs up from everybody. Okay, Angie, you're nodding, so I assume everybody else can hear you. I want to spend a few minutes and a couple of slides talking about the demographic makeup of our K-4 configured schools. There was a question several weeks ago about what the new configuration would do to free and reduced distribution, specialized distribution, ethnic distribution throughout the district. So Cassie, could you... This slide and the next 2 slides will look very similar. I want to spend a second or 2 talking about how to read the slide. This particular one talks about students that have been identified as having a disability of our K-4 students. So if we talk about all of our K-4 students, district-wide, only K-4, we identify 19% of them as having a disability. So that's currently. And we're making the assumption that under a reconfiguration, we would also have 19% of our students in K-4 as having a disability. The second column, and each row is listed, those are the schools under the consolidation plan. The second column, school current percentage with disability, that represents the percentage of each one of those schools, students with a disability. For example, Jefferson currently has 25% of its students identified as having a disability. And GD Jones, 19%, Stetin, 9%, and all the way down the list. The school, under a proposal, percent disability will change because the makeup of the school will change. And if we look at Jefferson alone, district-wide, the average is 19. Currently in Jefferson, we have 25% identified with a disability. Under the proposal, that would go to 21%. And currently, Jefferson has 6% more than the district. Under the proposal, they would only have 2% more. So if you think of it this way, Jefferson got 4% closer to the average of the district under the proposal. So actually, the green would bring us closer to the district average and would give a more even distribution of, in this case, students with a disability. Now, if you're doing some math and it doesn't add up, that's because there are decimals that are underneath these numbers, and sometimes the decimals don't round out like you want them to. GD Jones would go from being 19% labeled with a disability to 22%. So they were right at the average, and they went a little bit higher. So they got 3% further away from the district average. Stetin, under the proposal, would get 2% closer to the district average. South Mountain would get further away from the district average, go from 16% with a disability to 14. So they'd get further away by 3%. Riverview would get 1% closer. Hawthorne Hills would get 1% closer, and John Marshall would get 1% further away. So these numbers are pretty tight, 1s, 2s, 3s, and 4s. So the percent disability for each one of these schools doesn't change that much, and in some cases, it brings it closer to the average. And then below, there's just a chart that says the same. Cassie, could you advance to the next slide? We'll go through them a little bit quicker because we know how to read the slide and read the data. This speaks to free-reduced students, percent that are economically disadvantaged. Jefferson, the district average in K-4 is about 44% of our district, free-reduced. Okay, Jefferson currently is at 61%. Under the proposal, they'd go to 55. They'd get 6% closer to the district average. Jones currently at 67 would go to 68. They would get a little bit further away from the average. Stetin would get closer to the average by 3. South Mountain would get closer to the average by 4. Now you're getting some big numbers that bring you closer and smaller numbers that bring you further away. Look at Hawthorne Hills, get 16% closer to the average. Under the current configuration, the demographics, 69% of Hawthorne Hills students are free-reduced. That's 50... That's 25% more than the average. They've moved to 52, which is only 8%. Now, keep in mind, we're talking about current students. Under the realignment proposal, that wouldn't happen for a few years, and we would have, obviously, different students. So we're making the assumption that we're measuring the same group of students. And Marshall would get a little further away. The next slide speaks to... Go ahead, Cassie. The next slide speaks to the percentage of our students that are identified as white. And the district average in K-4 is 61% white. And Jefferson has 41% white. They would move to 44% white. They'd get closer to the district average by 2%. GD Jones would get further away from the district average. Stetin would get further away from the district average, going from 73 to 80. They would essentially get more white, if you want to think of it that way, by 7%. South Mountain would get closer by 5%. Riverview would get further away by 1. Hawthorne and John Marshall would get 8 and 6% closer to the district average. Any questions on the demographic slides before we spend a second or 2 talking about transportation?
We'll just have to speak out.
Let's look at transportation. Next slide. Transportation is a big wild card. The data that we need and the tools that we use to develop routing plans do very well when you give specific data with specific boundaries and a very specific plan. And only then, you spend a lot of time, energy, and money and resources to develop a staffing... A busing plan. We're not really at that point where we want to dedicate a ton of resources into something that may or may not happen and may change along the way. So most of the conversations we're having right now with First Student and First Planning, which is their routing arm of their organization, are more conceptual in nature. They lack many of the specifics that we would need once a plan is more concrete. As the plan gets more concrete, we will bring those specifics in, and we will have tighter answers. But for now, we have to speak conceptually with our routing plan for buses. Some elements we want to take into consideration. Right now, we do our best to limit bus rides to an hour. As a matter of fact, that's in our First Student contract right now. We do have a variance. We allow some bus rides to go over an hour. It requires district approval, and it's only with a certain percent, very low percentage of our rides. It doesn't mean some of them don't go over an hour with the planned times over an hour or under an hour. Sometimes, things happen on the route, inclement weather and things like that. But we try to continue to achieve that, less than an hour ride. Allow for a transfer bus to transport secondary students from school to school. Think about our district right now, and it's bifurcated with an east-side set of routes and a west-side set of routes. And all of the east-side students go to east-side schools, including our 4K. And all the west-side students go to west-side schools. That allows us to achieve some efficiencies that we would lose if we want to transport east-side students to the west side. Think east-side students, that would be in 5th and 6th grade. They need to get to John Muir. And west-side students in 7th and 8th grade need to get to Horace Mann. At some point, we would have to consider a transfer bus. The transfer hub would be the 2 secondary schools, and in some way, we'd have to transfer students from east side to west side. We would have to have separate tiers. As we do now, we have a 4K tier, a tier of routes that are unique to 4K. We currently have a tier that's K-5, and then another tier that's 6 through 12. If the 5th graders are going to leave school with the 6th graders, and we have K-4s, the 3 tiers would be defined slightly differently. It'd be a 4K tier, a K through 4 tier, and a 5 through 12 tier. City metro ride use may need to change a little bit, but we will continue to try to leverage metro ride with Student Center on or near metro ride routes. Next slide, please. So a conceptual plan would include the following. 5 through 12 students would be starting and ending 30 to 45 minutes sooner than K-4 students. That's very similar to the way it is now. Our elementary time of day is slightly shorter than our secondary time of day. That's why it's not exactly the same stagger in the morning as it is in the afternoon. But we need a stagger of at least 30 minutes so we can use the same buses twice, or 3 times if you count 4K. We lose all chance of being efficient with our equipment and our drivers and everything else if we don't have them staggered by at least 30 minutes. West side, 5 through 12 students gathering at Muir and/or west, then transferring to a final school as necessary. Probably wouldn't happen too much with the high school students because the high school students on the east side will go to east, and the high school students on the west side will go to west. But if we do some other things with the secondary, at least we would have a better opportunity... Excuse me. If we do some other things with the high school, we would at least have an opportunity to get west-side students over to Wassa East and east-side students over to Wassa West. That's something to do with academies or something unique that we do at the high schools. We stand a better chance because we've got those transfer buses going from side to side. 5 through 12 students living near metro ride routes would use that service to get to and from school, very similar to now. But right now, we do that with 6 through 12 students, and we would do that with 5 through 12 students because 5 5th graders are in the middle school. Student transportation under a K-4 merger will increase busing costs. If you think about 13 elementary schools, and every elementary school has a radius around it that's 2 miles in radius that's two miles in radius where we don't bus students because they're expected to walk. You have thirteen of these discs throughout the district. You would only have seven such discs. So obviously, you would be transporting more students. Also, having east side students eventually needing to go to John Muir and west side students eventually needing to go to Horace Mann also would increase costs. So we do make the assumption costs are going to be increased. And actually, the data that I presented on, I think it was April twenty-seventh, that talked about achieving some efficiencies under this consolidation plan, already took that into consideration. So we've already taken into consideration that transportation costs will increase under this plan. Uh, we don't know how much. I've, I've been telling the First Student group it's somewhere more than a dollar and less than a million dollars. Well, it's a pretty wide range, uh, so I just picked the middle, five hundred thousand dollars. That's the number we've been carrying so far in our analysis. Next slide. I think, uh, perhaps hand it back to Dr. Hiltz at this point.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Lloyd and Mr. Tess. Appreciate that update. Um, just a, a closing statement. Again, the, the whole purpose of this referendum proposal is to better serve students, um, and advance our mission, right, of advancing student success. And I, I would encourage people to continue to ask questions, share ideas, share concerns as our, uh, upcoming updates are really built off the feedback that we get from, from parents, staff, um, and board members. So, thank you for your, your comments. Uh, are there any questions at this point now that we've concluded those three questions?
I don't see any hands up.
Not seeing any hands? So we will, uh, move on to the next item then, I think, President Zunker. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so just confirming, there aren't any questions. You don't see any, Cassie? I just wanted to make sure. There's a lot of information presented there.
Signs for everybody.
Okay. All right, so, um, no questions on that then. We are on to the next item, which was, is just the legal expense summary at the April Education Operations Committee meeting. Bob presented a summary report of legal expenses. That's not an action item. So we'll go on to the next agenda item, which is the facility user fees. And, um, we have a revised facility user fee and custodial fee schedule to approve. Was there an update since this was last presented?
No.
Okay. So with that, I am seeking a motion to approve the revisions to the facility user and custodial fee schedule.
You're one and a two.
You're one and a two.
Pat's one.
Pat's one.
Jane's two.
Jane's two.
Okay, so we have Pat McKee as a first, Jane Rouge as a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Revisions, um, to that user fee, um, schedule are approved. Moving on to budget reconciliation plan. At that same meeting, Bob Testan presented a budget reconciliation plan. And I am seeking, oh, well, actually, um, were there any updates to that, Bob?
No, however, we'll, we'll see a budget a week from tonight. So we'll see a budget. And this is just the budget reconciliation plan that informs the budget.
Okay, so a week from tonight, we will see a budget that's just informs this, this budget reconciliation plan informs it. So I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board, which we are in our full board meeting, um, the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget reconciliation plan as presented. Seeking a first and a second?
I think Jim's.
I can't see everybody.
Right.
Beth is up there.
Beth, okay. So Jim and Beth.
Beth and Jim, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, we have Jim as a first and Beth, uh, as a second. All in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
So that was Jane. Abstentions? There weren't any abstentions, right?
No.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. All right, let's move on to agenda item eight and new business. The first thing is the secondary algebra resource adoption. Uh, also at the Education Operations Committee meeting, here, um, the secondary math resource adoption team presented on the Algebra I and II resources that they asked the board to consider for adoption. And I am seeking a motion to approve the Algebra I and II curriculum resources. Jane's a first.
Jim's a two.
Okay, so we have Jane Rouge as a first on that motion, Jim Boucher as a second, all in favor?
Favor. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. The next item, uh, is the resolution authorizing the redemption of certain of the general obligation refunding bonds.
And that'll be a roll call vote.
Okay, so I'm going to read this in full. It is a roll call vote. Resolution authorizing the redemption of certain of the general obligation refunding bonds, Series Twenty-Ten dated December third, two thousand and ten, and authorizing the transfer of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to and the defeasance of certain of the general obligation refunding bonds, Series Twenty-Eleven dated November fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, and general obligation school building bonds, Series Twenty-Fifteen-A, dated August fourth, two thousand and fifteen. And just, um, for clarification, six months ago, on October twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, the board approved a tax levy for the two thousand and nineteen, twenty fiscal year that included approximately eight million dollars applied to previously issued callable debt in a strategy known as debt defeasance. The strategy reduces approximately five hundred thousand dollars in interest costs while offering greater flexibility in future debt management. The second and final step in this process is to formally approve the establishment of an escrow account for the purposes of defeasance of certain general obligation bonds and transfer of funds into this account. So the administration requested that this formal action take place at the May eleventh Board of Education meeting. We do have two motions, both will be a roll call vote. The first motion is to authorize the establishment of an escrow account for the purpose of defeasance of certain general obligation bonds as presented. Seeking a first and a second?
Lance is out there.
Lance?
James Boucher.
All right, so we have Lance Trollop as the first on that motion and, uh, Jim Boucher as a second.
Okay, and Teresa is going to be responding via text since she is on the phone.
Okay.
Okay, Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Calo?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Okay, Teresa's hasn't come in yet. Uh, Jane Rouge?
Yes.
Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Teresa said yes. Uh, Tricia Zunker?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the second motion is to authorize the redemption of outstanding bonds as presented.
Lee. Okay, Lance is a second.
Okay, so we have Lee Webster as a first and Lance Trollop as a second on that motion.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Calo? Calo?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Miles? Teresa's a yes. Jane Rouge?
Yes.
Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Tricia Zunker?
Yes.
Okay, I'm muted.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're moving on to fourth quarter grading policy. And, um, this was a request that I did make to Dr. Hiltz, uh, to address this because, um, we do have an established policy. And I, I had asked if, in the interest of transparency, we could have some better understanding into the thought process behind, um, the determined grading policy, um, here in tonight's meeting.
Yep. And I believe Mr. Weber will start the presentation and our secondary principals are here to support.
Okay.
We have the secondary school. We're going to give a, a presentation this evening. I have, uh, some of the secondary campus principals working this evening. And so I'm going to give a brief introduction and then the principals will take over and cover parts of the presentation. So, uh, tonight, the secondary principals are here, as I said. And, and, uh, I'd like to bring up a couple things before we begin the presentation. And as reminders that, number one, uh, the pandemic that we're going through is a unique and unprecedented event. Many of the decisions that we are making from curriculum and operational processes to grading are based on situations that we have never faced before COVID had surfaced. Uh, that grading is a topic that can elicit many, uh, different opinions and that, uh, there are many different ways to grade. Uh, that no system is perfect. Uh, this system that was developed was designed with all students in mind and with the best of intent. Uh, we understand that the system, uh, challenges the status quo. Uh, ultimately, who knows? Uh, this may lead to a better system as we move forward. Uh, the process that we use to develop the system is based on the following. Uh, we, we did some research on, uh, Husky was, was one of the leading researchers and I put a quote for him from a journal segment article. Uh, is, is somebody that we are very familiar with. Uh, many of the secondary principals have done deep work into grading over the years, especially at, uh, at the middle school level where they look at standards-based grading. So they have a, a keen understanding what Marzano has to say. So, uh, we have some research backing on what we felt worked well during this emergency learning time. Uh, we had discussions with other schools and we watched what other schools were doing. Uh, we were not a district that, uh, jumped out in front and said, uh, in week one, this is how we're going to grade students. We waited and, uh, for approximately a month before we made a decision and wanted to see what other schools were doing. Uh, we did survey the staff. We asked for their feedback and their opinions on different grading systems.
Cassie?
Uh, we, we tried to stay true to the district strategic plan, especially the achievement strand tied to equity. And I think most importantly, we had internal discussions. And I'd like to highlight that during these internal discussions, uh, there was both experience and knowledge in the room. We had all of our secondary principals, uh, involved in the discussion. And that there were, and, and as we kind of tossed this around and, and, and had the discussions, it became very apparent that there was a strong belief in three things. That number one, we are in emergency learning and instruction law, which is very different than, say, uh, your typical, uh, online or virtual learning, both for the students and for the staff. Uh, two, that the experience of students in the system is varying widely, much more so than what we can do when we, we have a more controlled environment in the classroom. And a third thing that was very evident is that, um, that all possible systems, both their pros and cons were discussed. And in the end, equity became a large part of our discussion. So in the end, the grading system was based on three elements. And we all agreed we're part of emergency learning and instruction. That number one, this is a false normalcy. Uh, number two, there's a significant reduction in curricular content that's being delivered. And that many inequities, uh, are being amplified between students during emergency learning and instruction. So tonight, the secondary principals will talk about these three factors as well as discuss how colleges and universities are reacting to emergency learning and instruction as it relates to admissions and scholarships. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the principals to report out the factors that I addressed above. And I believe Jenny Seymour will start this off.
Good evening, everybody. Um, my name is Jenny Seymour and I'm the principal at Wave. And Cassie, if you could forward to slide three, that would be awesome. Thank you, perfect. All right, so my role tonight is really to differentiate, to clarify the difference between what's happening right now with our students in the brick and mortar schools in contrast from a true virtual school experience. In Wave, for example, our curriculum is established and vetted, you know, lengthy process, just like it would be when, uh, a building takes on any kind of curriculum to use with its students. That vetted curriculum is designed specifically to be delivered virtually. Our platform is designed in that way. All of our structures interface with each other so that there's transparency with families. Students are brought into the virtual learning environment knowing upfront that their education will be delivered online, which means more independence on their part and more parental involvement in many instances. We also, as a virtual school, have resources in place to help struggling learners and to, it, bridge gaps where that face-to-face interaction does not happen. And in those ways, what's happening now with the brick and mortar students, while all of the phenomenal Wausau School District teachers are doing their very best to meet the needs in this unprecedented time, it's not virtual learning. And to misnomer it as that creates possibly a sense of confusion between a virtual school experience and what's happening in emergency remote learning. And that's truly what's happening with the majority of the Wausau School District students right now. It's emergency remote learning where teachers are on the fly trying to meet the needs of students while also facing the needs in their own home and they haven't been trained necessarily to deliver curriculum online. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions that I can regarding virtual school. But from the points that we're making from this slide, that to compare virtual learning, which in Wave's circumstance, we are continuing with normal grades because we haven't had a need to change. Our curriculum hasn't been disrupted and neither has our, um, expectations for students and families through a COVID, safe-at-home order.
All right, I think I'll move on to slide four. Cassie? All right, this is Rob Phelps, Principal Porzeman Middle School. And I'm just going to leave out the reduction in curriculum. Uh, first and foremost, our teachers are doing amazing things. Uh, they're doing a great job paring things down, really focusing on the non-negotiable content standards and focusing on growth in those areas. Although doing a great job, we all know that it's near impossible for our staff to accurately capture learning during this time compared to when they are in the building. Also, in working with staff with their curriculum during emergency remote learning, we have used this phrase over and over it, uh, again. Take what you do, cut it in half, and then cut it in half again. In short, what our teachers are teaching is not the same. And in turn, what our students are learning is not the same. But we are doing great things. However, if we would have gone with an A through F scale, an A in algebra last year and an A this year would mean totally different things. But on the report card, they would look the same. So, um, that's my piece on reduction in curriculum. I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Young.
Good evening. Shannon Young, Principal EEA Learning Academy. Cassie, if you could forward it to the next slide, please? A really significant part of our discussion, um, throughout this whole process was about equity. We continue to come back to equity and realizing that our student experiences around our district vary widely. Uh, initially, we had some students who didn't have access to internet. Um, I can tell you that the district has been phenomenal in ensuring that students have access in addition to, you know, community businesses such as Charter Spectrum, offering bookups for, for families, um, to get that for free for a time. But we had some families who had outstanding bills. And if you had an outstanding bill, then you weren't able to get, um, booked up to, to internet. The district has helped with hotspots for students just to make sure that we could level up the access as much as possible. But we know that the marginalized students are going to be the most impacted. We have families who have their younger siblings at home. Older siblings are expected to help take care of them if the family is fortunate to still be able to go to work every day. So, um, and we also have, you know, parents who are trying to work from home and educate their children. Um, there's just so many variations of what's occurring in homes across our entire community. And so by looking at something that doesn't continue to assign those, those letter grades, taking into account this false normal, or, excuse me, false normalcy and, um, the elements that, that Dr. Phelps just spoke to, um, this provides some latitude for teachers who, who have knowledge of some of those circumstances surrounding their students, their unique learning environments or they learn about these environments and their various, um, situations. So we knew we really needed to understand and consider the demographics of that student population in our greater community. And if we, um, continued with a standard grading policy, knowing that they weren't receiving the same amount of curriculum and that this just truly isn't, it's, this isn't normal. This isn't a normal period of time. And, and I can tell you individually, because EEA utilizes a computer-based curriculum initially, I said, well, we don't really need to change anything because our curriculum hasn't really changed. And then we realized that we needed to make some changes to our curriculum because we're designed to use the curriculum we chose and vetted as a hybrid where there's a lot of support one-on-one in the classroom, face-to-face with, with a, a staff member. So as we went through this whole discussion process, the element of equity just continued to be extremely important to us in ensuring that we were being fair to the students and recognizing, um, the situation that we're all in right now. And we started to look more at proficiency and hearing that proficiency is more informative in scope than pass/fail. Pass/fail still gives you a wide variety. And we, we believe that the system that we chose helps differentiate a bit. You know, maybe you do have a student who, um, continues to work very, very hard in this time span. Maybe they have a lot of extra supports to be able to do that. Um, maybe they don't have a lot of supports and they continue to work very, very hard. But we would be able to, um, demonstrate more clearly where each one of those students was if we looked at the, the scale that we, um, that we put out there. And that that would help account for any of the inequities that, that students might be sa- um, And that that would help account for any of the inequities that students might be facing during the rest of this semester. If anyone has any questions, I certainly can speak to them in regards to equity.
I don't know if now's the right time or we should wait till the end of the presentation for questions.
We'll probably answer some questions in the next two slides.
Yeah, maybe we might just wait. I don't know if my mic is on. Go ahead. I think that it would make the most sense to just wait. We have two more slides and maybe these slides might answer some questions.
Hello, everyone. This is Larry Mansell, Principal at John Neare. Hopefully you can all hear me. One of the questions that was raised was why not offer a choice system to students? And some of the concerns we as an administrative team had with that was you are essentially determining the learning that has occurred with the same cohort of students under two different contrasting system, letter grade system and a proficiency system. Sometimes that can lead to being very divisive. By that I mean having some difficult conversations with families where perhaps parents want a student to have a letter grade and the student is feeling pressured into wanting that proficiency ban. So it's really making a forced choice, which we did not feel was necessarily fair to parents or the students. In all of our research and contacting universities and colleges, we did not find any evidence that it will impact negatively any future opportunities for students. In other words, a letter grade has no implied or implicit benefit over any other system. And to speak to that, I kind of want to talk a little bit about one of the conversations I had with one of the admissions officers at the UW system. Colleges are already preparing for the junior class without GPAs being calculated from any district. And how he summed it up was that this is not new for colleges. They are seeing 50 to 60 different variations of a grading system from not only Wisconsin, but the university system is also looking at grading systems from other states across the country as well as international students. So really, when you look at what neighboring districts might be doing, whether Stevens Point or Merrill or DC Everest, we have to look at it from the perspective of what colleges are facing. And so the information that we're getting is that what WSA is doing is extremely beneficial in the eyes of the college, simply because it is really looking at the course of the entire semester. When you look at the Everest system, they, the students in that system cannot do any worse than the grade that they earned third quarter. And colleges have some concerns with that because what is the true motivation for a student who has done exceptionally well during that third quarter? They simply could stop and do absolutely nothing and they're missing 25% of the curriculum for a year-long course. And so colleges are going to have to look at ways that they are going to gain additional information on those students, whether it be additional data points that they look at or additional letters of recommendation. Also, as was previously discussed, the delivery of the instruction right now is vastly different for teachers with the quick pivot to that emergency remote learning. Our district was well-suited for delivering remote learning as a template for professional development days, not for a long-term solution to pandemic. So with that, we can move on to the next slide.
Good evening, everyone. This is Brad Peck, Principal at WSA East High School. And I would like to address the impact that this current grading scale that we have will have on college admission. As we all know, colleges, universities, technical colleges really are gatekeepers for what we do and the assessment policies that we have at the high school level. They're driven in many ways by the colleges, the technical colleges and the universities, what they'll accept, what they won't accept, the NCAA clearinghouse. So when we started to develop these guidelines for grading, we were receiving a lot of anecdotal information from our counselors just through informal conversations. And then we decided to get a little more specific qualitative data to support our grading guidelines. So the four secondary principals, along with Mr. Weber, we split up the schools and we contacted UW Madison, Edgewood College, Platteville, Madison College, UW Green Bay, UW Oshkosh, UW Point, including Marathon Campus, UW Whitewater, UW Eau Claire, UW Stout, UW River Falls, UW Milwaukee, UW La Crosse, UW Superior, Chippewa Valley Technical College, NTC, Mid State Tech and Fox Valley Tech. And there's a link on this slide that you can look at the specific responses we received from each of these schools. But for this evening, I just wanted to highlight a few points that, or some of the responses we received that in essence, as the first bullet point says, high schools are going to be held harmless for this graduating class. And this has also been impact freshmen, sophomores and juniors. For instance, Mid State Technical College said, any grading or credit that we adopt will not impact admission. UW La Crosse is very impressed with what WSA is doing. They're preparing for a class of seniors that has been prepared for college experience in a very different way. UW Superior prefers the proficiency scale as it is much more defined than a pass/fail and accounts for the work completed over the entire semester. And UW GB stated, students have been through a lot this year and we do not want grading concerns to add stress and anxiety to their lives and overshadow the importance of continued learning in its many forms. If you read through those responses, the universities want to make sure that the mandatory classes or courses that a student would need for admissions, is there a, did students receive a passing grade? For example, Algebra I for many of our UW schools. Also, a lab-based science class, was there a passing grade issue or a pass, passing mark? So the UW system, the colleges, universities, the technical colleges in Wisconsin were very supportive of what we're doing and how we are assessing student work. And that was very important in us determining these different bands that we were going to be able to assess students with at the end of the quarter. One of the things that the universities, many of the admissions counselors had stated was if there are questions, they're probably going to reach out and there might be the need for an additional letter of recommendation. There'll probably be an increase in the dialogue with guidance counselors and school administrators. But overall, the general theme was that they approved with the assessment bands that we're utilizing here in WSA in these new guidelines. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Steckbauer from WSA West High School.
Hello, everyone. Jeff Steckbauer, WSA West High School. I'm going to talk a little bit about scholarships, which is kind of goes hand in hand with what Dr. Peck just talked about. As we know, there are scholarships really from all over the place in terms of, you know, business and industry, with our post-secondary and higher ed institutions, within WSA West, you know, and the specific schools. So to get a gauge on what everyone would do, I think would be unrealistic specifically. I think when we look at what happens, or what we found out from our higher ed institutions and from what we know about, you know, this isn't a, what we're dealing with isn't something that's affecting WSA, obviously. It's affecting the world. So I think when our units should start reviewing scholarship applications, number one, they're going to pull what happened this semester. And I believe students will be held harmless just as they will be when applying for post-secondary The other thing that most scholarships, as involved with most scholarship applications, is an essay of some sort where students could talk about their situations, whether they overcame obstacles during this time period to possibly explain what, you know, our system had been. And the other thing to consider is that, and I believe it's come up a little bit throughout this presentation, but just in our small area, I know, I can't remember who mentioned it, maybe Larry, that talked about institution higher ed are looking at, they look at grade transfers from all across the world in different countries and there's all kinds of variations. And I think just in our central Wisconsin area, you'll find that, as we mentioned, DC Everest, but there's Merrill Northwest, Mozzie Southwest, Marshlands, you know, Spoyne. And I think, of course, those places that are offering scholarships are going to be faced with very similar kinds of things that our post-secondary institutions are. And that is kind of sifting through all kinds of different grading scales. And I think ours offers some specificity without, as we said, putting additional stresses on our students. And I also think that essay is something that more and more is being considered, not only in scholarship, for scholarships, but also for entrance into our higher ed institutions. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to just finish by first by thanking the campus principals and all of the principals. Each and every principal had an opportunity to be part of the conversation and each and every principal added to the conversation. So this is truly a team effort and I think they did an excellent job in putting this together. But I do want to also address that we understand that there are weaknesses in any grading system. And for the time period that we had to put this together, we continue to discuss this process weekly. We recognize as we're going through that there are some drawbacks that we seek to weigh them against, you know, the needs that need to be addressed and need to be met. And so if there's something that we can do to tweak it or fix it, we're certainly looking at it. As a matter of fact, we have a standing agenda item every Tuesday to discuss grading. And tomorrow, some things were brought to my attention, so we're going to have a discussion on if there's some things that we can do to help clarify the grading scale better to teachers. And so that'll be a discussion tomorrow. But in the end, we feel that we put a system together that's fair and equitable and, you know, the great achievement bands, I think, really help differentiate it from a pass/fail system. So thank you for listening tonight. If you have any questions.
I do have a question. Thanks, Paul. I do have a question and other board members might have a question as well. And also, in the meantime, I do want to direct board members to Policy 5421 regarding grading, just to recall what our role is in this discussion. But one of my questions, and actually maybe just the first question, the only question, Paul, is were the teachers consulted in this process?
Yes, we sent out basically several formats of a grading could look like and we asked to give the pros and cons, what they thought for each system. So then when we got the information back, then we could sit through it and develop a system, you know, based on some of their feedback.
Pat probably has questions. Okay, do any other board members have questions?
Hear me?
Yes.
Who is it?
Pat.
I assume that's a yes. So my first question is at the last meeting, maybe it was the last, the one that we had in person where this was first brought out, I had asked to see data that showed how much the grades fluctuated from the end of third quarter to the end of fourth quarter. Does anybody have that?
Okay, Pat, I started looking into that, right? And I do not have the data. It would be a large, especially without people being able to enter, you know, the buildings and the people who run that over at high schools, it would be very difficult to put that together in a shorter period of time.
Okay, so we don't have that. Okay. My next question is, and I don't know if this goes to Shannon or Heath or whomever, but what is our, what is the definition that we're using for equity?
I think the simplest definition that we've been using is giving students what they need when they need it.
So, and I guess, let me just be crystal clear, I totally understand that this is a once-in-a-lifetime situation, dealing with it in our personal lives, our professional lives, et cetera. Completely understand that there's different levels of support, technology, all of that stuff that varies across our student base and completely understood, completely recognize that. Also recognize that everybody has worked and continues to work extremely hard to deliver the best curriculum in the best possible settings and make sure that students are getting everything that we can deliver to them. But I guess by using that definition though of equity, and I talked to a very small number of teachers and they, their feedback to me was, I said, if a student, and I can't remember who it was, it might have been Larry Mansell that said it, I said, if a student is doing a work at the end of third quarter, what are the chances that that student's going to be dropping at the end of fourth quarter? The feedback I got was very, very limiting. Okay? They said, students that are doing well typically are going to continue to do well. They said, there might be a couple deviations, A minus, B plus, but in general, it's going to be fairly consistent. So for those students who bring on the stress of a grade and want to continue to do well, how is this, by forcing them into a particular system and not offering a choice, which is what I would advocate, how is this equitable to those students?
Equities for all students, not those students.
And we're also not having an honor roll, correct? Correct. How was that, was that entire process equitable and supportive for those students who are what we would consider to be higher achievers or on, you know, on one end of the spectrum? How does it support that?
So Pat, when we're looking at all students, would we, and this is why, one of the reasons why we didn't want to go with a pass/fail system is that we could feel there wasn't enough differentiation there. And so the idea of the advanced down to the insufficient evidence, we felt teased out those grade bands so that students could still have a differentiation between high-quality work and that, you know, that they're showing. And, you know, while still taking into consideration the latitude that we understand that some students are not, you know, all those things you just mentioned, that some students are going to have a varying experience in what's going on in this emergency remote learning.
Right, but you're still... Right, but you're still assigning, you're still assigning an achievement level with your advanced. And I've looked at my own kids' grades, and I've seen that an advanced equates to an A. If it's above 90%, you're getting an advanced, you're also getting an A. And then, the proficient and meets and all that seems to coincide with the B, C, D, and F, so what's the difference?
I have a comment. May I address this? Pat, I have a question for you. So, we're talking about equity, and we hear that the administration says that the curriculum has been chopped down to basically a quarter. So, if somebody gets an A, if we were to keep it at an A, they get an A in Algebra II, that is not going to be equitable to some student that earned an A in Algebra II last year. I guess that's where my concern lies, is the fact that it's not the same curriculum. So, an Algebra II Wassa West A from last year is not going to be the same as an Algebra II Wassa West A this year under these circumstances.
That's students' fault this year. So, how is that equitable to them? They didn't bring this on.
Now, we're using different versions of equity. I'm not sure.
Just saying, I don't disagree with that. But I, in the purest definition of equitable, this isn't. And I'm still confused, why do we not give them a choice? For those students that are continuing to be engaged and have whatever it is that they need and can deliver and execute on whatever kind of curriculum we are placing in front of them, why can't we allow them to continue with their letter grade system? And for those that we don't think that's a good fit for or choose in whatever situation, if you have students in that scenario that they want to go to this achievement band or achievement gap, why can't we allow them a choice?
I could speak to that a little bit. You ask really good questions. We've had some of these, some of these conversations. Let me, let me just do a little logic experiment, if you don't mind. So, if the argument is that if students are working hard and achieving, that they should be recognized for that achievement, then that argument really has to go both ways. I mean, if students aren't able or willing to put in the effort and achieve, that should be recognized as well. And I had an interesting conversation with a parent whose child was doing very well in the past, not a straight-A student, but doing very well. And this semester, their grades are significantly higher. And they were hoping that we could offer grades as an option so this student could, their achievement this fourth quarter could be recognized. And I'm going to refer back to the comment that President Zunker just made, and not to be harsh or judgmental, but if that student is getting an A when they're typically maybe a B student, they're earning an A in a course where they're covering 25% to 50% of the course, of the course material. So, I guess in my logic, if a student is only covering that amount of the material, the grades really should not be counted because it is not reflecting the same achievement. And in that way, it's inequitable to other students who have or will in the future complete this course. I don't know if that helps.
It helps? No, I don't disagree with that, but it still begs the question that these students who are high achievers, who want the grades, who want to show the consistent high achievement that they have, it's not equitable to them. I'm starting the arguments about how, you know, that equity is what we base this in, and I get that, and I hear it because if someone said, "The marginalized students are the most impacted," I get all that. But it's like equity applies to all of the groups except for those that are high achievers and may have found themselves on an honor roll.
I disagree.
Pat, one other thing I'd like to point out is that, let's say we have a student who only is an A student, and maybe comes from a family that is somewhat marginalized. Maybe they don't have great internet access, maybe they have to, you know, stay home during the day and watch brothers and sisters that don't have the support, and maybe some other students may have. Maybe during emergency remote learning, they have to make the choice to not take the grade and go with the pass/fail because of the conditions at the grid. And that's the one thing that hit me, is that is that really fair to that student that they have to choose not to take the grade because they feel that they may not do as well as they normally would if they were in a classroom environment?
Okay, so I'm going to make a comment. I was commenting, I'll go after you if you have another comment, Pat, I'll wait until you're done.
Yeah, we finished 95, whatever percent it was of the third quarter. So, again, if that student, if we gave them a choice and went with like the DCEO system that said, "The grade you have at the end of third quarter, you can't do worse, but you can improve yourself," that student could still choose to take that end-of-third-quarter grade. I'm still, nobody has answered, why don't we allow the kids to choose? That's my fundamental question. What is the barrier?
You or me? Go ahead, go ahead. Paul's talking now.
The one that I just gave. No, I, so I hear that, Paul, and I, to me, that, I'm waiting for more because that, if that's our explanation, is that scenario, then I completely understand why there's families that are upset because of the lack of choice.
And I get that point too, Pat, I really do. And as I said earlier, there's no perfect system here. I mean, we were kind of thrust into it, as well as, you know, we have, one of the things that we're working on, and I mentioned this, I mean, we're still, it's not just the students either, the teachers are being used to the system as well. And to make sure that, you know, you talked about the grade bands lining up with the, you know, with the grade, with the, you know, 90, 80, 70, 60. You know, that wasn't necessarily our intent. We look back at that and say, you know, maybe that's obviously how people are going to look at it. One of the things we need to do a better job of, and that's coming through bottom clear, is that we need to give the teachers more instruction on how to use those grade bands.
Okay. So, at the end of the day, then, our answer for why we're not allowing choice is because we could have a scenario in which a student was achieving an A, and for whatever reason, they don't have adequate support for technology, and A is the wrong word, they were achieving a grade, and for whatever reason, they don't have strong support or technology, and we would force them to choose a grade band because they expect to see a diminishing grade over the fourth quarter.
I'll do one thing, and then you.
That's our answer.
I would disagree. I would say our answer is these grades would be invalid. They are not measuring anything comparable to anything else.
So, just a couple comments. I just want to remind the board of the policy again, 5421, just going to the language of it, part of it says, "The board believes that the district's grading system should be a reliable system and one that ensures each student's grades signify accurately his/her degree of accomplishment of those expected learning outcomes." So, what I've heard from administration tonight, and I appreciate that this was agendized, I did make the request so that we could have a transparent conversation about this, so that students and, students, parents, and board members could have an understanding of the thought process behind this. But what we've heard tonight is that the learning outcomes have been modified significantly. So, an A is not going to look the same as it would in that class typically with, if all the learning outcomes were achieved as they're supposed to be. I did reach out to some teachers to have a better understanding myself, and what I'm hearing is a lot of concern if there were any changes made. They're four weeks into the system, and I wanted to be very clear that that was not something that I, that my desire to understand the process, but certainly not any changes. I don't know if anybody else is trying to signify that. I think that takes it out of the board's lane. I think we need to stay in our lanes, and we have a grading policy here, and the policy also says the board directs the district administrator to develop procedures for grading, and that includes developing clear, consistent criteria and standards, particularly when grades are based on subjective assessment. Now, keep in mind, that assessment is drastically changed in these circumstances. I do want to thank Jenny for the information that she presented early on. As I've been a professor in remote learning environments for 13 years, I know that this is quite different. I see what our teachers are doing, and it's amazing, and they're adapting, and I am so impressed. You know, I have a young son myself, and to see him get on Google Chat and to see what they're doing every day, but it's not the same standards. So, I really appreciate that we were able to start this conversation with being able to distinguish why the learning environments are so different right now. So, I'm very grateful for the information because we are getting concerns, board members are being called directly, we're getting emails, and we did address this policy in person, but now we have a better understanding of everything that went into it. Are there any other questions? Not sure if anybody else has further questions on this topic.
Thing I'm going to say is I appreciate that about the policy and everybody staying in their lane, but I do think we have an obligation to also get out of the lane when, in fact, we perceive, or at least I perceive, us applying the definition of equity when it suits our needs. I'm going to leave it at that.
Any other board members with questions, comments, or concerns? There's no hands up. Okay. Not seeing any hands up. We're going to move on to committee updates, board referrals. This is agenda item nine. So, we have a few appointments to make, first legislative liaison. Oh, before, before I do that, there are five items on here. Are there any board members that had interest in serving on this and you hadn't originally indicated that interest, or alternatively, you did indicate interest and you are no longer interested? This is legislative liaison, WECAN Consortium Committee Member, Union Contract Negotiating Committee, Human Growth and Development Committee, and Gifted and Talented Committee Member. Otherwise, I will be going based off of the originally submitted information.
Actually, this is Lee. The only other area was that I was sort of, you know, as an interim, appointed to the Marathon Comedy Education and Economic Development Committee, and that's not listed there.
Okay, that's true. That's, that's right. Thank you, Lee. Do we have to put that on a different?
I think it needs to be added to the policy because it's not on the policy.
Okay. So, we are going to add that to the policy, or at least we'll address it as a board to see if we're, if we want to add it to the policy. In the meantime, Lee, do you mind continuing on with that? Is he answering?
I'm interested in continuing.
Okay. Okay, then we'll agendize it for a future meeting and ensure that the board approves having it added to the policy. I'm not anticipating any issues, but thank you for that, Lee. Okay, so I'm not seeing any change in interest one way or another, so I'm going to appoint, first of all, legislative liaison. I will appoint Kalau to that, and I will also ask that that is added to the regular board meeting as it's called the item. Second is the WECAN Consortium Committee Member. I will appoint Jim Boucher to that. Third, we have Union Contracting, Union Contract Negotiating Committee. This says two members parenthetically. We did change that policy a little less than two years ago to allow for three members. I'm seeing that there's interest from three individuals. If that interest has not changed, I believe that we should appoint three instead of two, and that will be Jim Boucher, Kalau, and Beth Martin. And then, next, Human Growth and Development Committee Member. My understanding is that by statute, this, will this committee be meeting?
Once every three years.
Okay, so, it doesn't seem like they will be meeting during this potential appointment, but in any event, I will appoint Jane Rouge. And finally, Gifted and Talented Committee Member. Let's see, we had two individuals interested, but one of those has already been appointed twice tonight, so I will appoint Jane Rouge to that position as well. And I want to thank all of you for your interest and your willingness to serve on these committees. Okay, next, we are on agenda item 10, open forum, board member professional growth and development report. Does anybody have anything to share as it relates to professional growth and development? No hands up? Okay. Doesn't seem we have any hands up, so we will move on to superintendent commentary, if any.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate pride I have in our staff's ability to meet the needs of kids in these changing times. Thank you very much to the secondary principals and Mr. Weber tonight. I know that there's a lot of preparation into both the development of the grading scale and the, and the presentation tonight. I think that is it for night now. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Cassie, was there, were there any activities, probably not in this virtual learning environment? I don't think anyone had anything to report.
Actually, there were a couple of activities, and I emailed out that activity liaison report to the board members, and I will upload that to Board Book tomorrow.
Oh, okay, so, I guess I'm going to reference that activity report that will be uploaded tomorrow. And for presiding officer commentary, I just want to reiterate a thank you also. This has just been a difficult and uncertain time, and the administration, the staff, or teachers, everybody's doing phenomenal. You know, we're all doing the best that we can, and to see the support for our students, I see it as a mother and as a board member, and I'm just so grateful. I also want to highlight that tomorrow, there is a special election. Whoever you vote for, I hope that you get out and vote, if you haven't already, and make sure to vote safely. With that, I am seeking a motion to adjourn.
Oh, Kazo first?
Okay. And two. Who's it, Jim? Okay. All right, so we have Kalau is a first on that, Jim Boucher is a second. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.